Good evening and welcome to the Bellevue City Council meeting for Tuesday, November 13, 2018. I'd like to take a moment before the meeting begins to congratulate all the candidates for the election, those that ran. We appreciate every single one of you stepping up. The first thing I'd like to do is also honor our veterans in honor of Veterans Day. If you have served or are serving, please stand. All the veterans, please stand. Thank you so much for your service. And the rest of us, please stand. Everyone, please stand for the Pledge of Allegiance. Do we have Pastor Jonas Myers here this evening? Did he make it? I do not see him.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for
Item three. Sabrina, please call roll.
Mr. Hanson.
Here.
Mr. Cook.
Here.
Mr. Shannon.
Here.
Mr. Preister.
Here.
Mr. Burns.
Here.
And Mr. Motry.
Here.
Thank you. Item four, this meeting will be conducted according to the Open Meetings Act, which is posted in the entry to the council chair. Item five, approval of agenda, consent agenda, claims, and advisory committee reports.
Item five A is approval of the agenda.
I would move to approve the agenda.
Second.
The motion and a second, discussion or questions. Sinan, please vote. Thank you.
Item five B is approval of the consent agenda. The following items will, are considered to be routine by the city council and will be enacted by one motion unless the city council member or the mayor requests an item be removed, removed from the consent agenda, in which case it will be placed in its normal sequence on the agenda. Item five B one is approval of the minutes from the October 22, 2018 Board of Equalization Meeting and the October 22, 2018 City Council Meeting. Item five B two, acknowledged receipt of the October 25, 2018 minutes from the Planning Commission. Item five B three, approval of claims. Item five B four, approval of hunting waiver applications. Item five B five, approving the cancellation of the December 24, 2018 City Council Meeting and authorizing staff to pay bills that cannot be held over until the January 14, 2019 City Council Meeting. Item five B six, approving the appointment of Sue Cutsford to the Planning Commission for a three-year term ending August 2021. Item five B seven, approval of the request from Advanced Gaming Technology, Bellevue Kino Operator, to change the Kino method of live draw, excuse me, live ball draw to random number generator sequence selection in emergency situations. Item five B eight, approve the, approve the renewal of the 2019 Maintenance Agreement Number Five and Certificate of Compliance between the City of Bellevue and the Nebraska Department of Transportation and authorize the mayor to sign. Mayor, members of the council, do you have any of these items that you'd have removed from the consent agenda?
Mayor.
Mr. Shannon.
I would remove five B six.
Six. Is there anything else that needs to be removed? Joe, where would you like to place that on the agenda?
That'll be in current business, item C.
Thank you, Mayor. I'll move to approve the consent agenda as just adjusted.
Second.
Second by Mr. Burns. Discussion or questions? Sinan, vote please. Thank you. Item six, special presentation, six A, presentation of Jewel of Bellevue Award for Green Bellevue. This right here is good? Alright. There we go. And I'll jump back in for a picture as well. Green Bellevue, Jewel of Bellevue presentation for November 2018. Green Bellevue was created under the leadership of then Gary Mixon, Mayor Gary Mixon, and City Council Don Preister. In September 20, 2009, Green Bellevue became its own nonprofit 501(c)(3) organization in 2010. Green Bellevue is made up of community-oriented volunteers coming together to work, to work together to support of our leaders to promote a more beautiful and environmental-friendly community. Green Bellevue helps individuals and groups undertake programs to enhance our neighborhoods, preserve our natural resources, and foster stewardship of our environment. This grassroots organization is supported by individual citizens, businesses, and organizations, school, churches, and public entities from Bellevue, Sarpy County, and the greater metro area. Each year since 2010, Green Bellevue has organized an educational Earth Day celebration, and starting in 2014, this event became Sarpy County Earth Day Celebration. Green Bellevue inspired residents from Gretna to start their own Green Gretna, whose volunteers are now taking part to organize 2019 Sarpy County Earth Day. Currently Bellevue, Green Bellevue is focused on the following areas: promoting clean energy and schools in our community, protection and planting of trees, creating sustainable wildlife habitat. They also have been instrumental in the Zero Waste Initiative, which encourages improvements and education in recycling, reusing, and reduction of waste. Green Bellevue's 17-person Board of Directors works with local experts and volunteers on important initiatives and educational programs, and continues to be instrumental in promoting environmental-friendly initiatives and programs throughout the Bellevue community. The volunteers are pleased to report that Green Bellevue has had a significant impact on the Bellevue community. Thank you for all that you do, and the Jewel of Bellevue is yours. Thank you.
Did he say put your hand on the mayor or the award? Take the lens cover off?
My name is Michelle Foss. I am a City of Bellevue resident. I am the interim director of Stewardship and Research at Fontainele Forest, and I am a Boy Scout leader for a Bellevue Boy Scout troop. I also recently joined the Green Bellevue Board. We at Green Bellevue very much appreciate the support and the partnership from the city, as well as from the schools, residents, businesses, and other organizations in the area to promote a greener and more beautiful Bellevue. I've always had a passion for the outdoors, and Green Bellevue gives me an opportunity to join with other like-minded people and those with different viewpoints for a common reason: a more sustainable, healthy, and green community where we can all make a difference for all of those generations to come after us. We're proud that our early beginnings started with the mayor's leadership, and you took over the baton in our early years, and we have appreciated the recognition and the support you have given all of these years. We very much look forward to continuing onward with our new mayor, Rusty Hike. Thank you again, and we look forward to continuing our work together.
Thank you, and congratulations, Green Bellevue.
Item six B is the third quarter update from Sarpy County Economic Development Corporation.
Good afternoon.
Welcome.
Or good evening. Everyone has a copy of the report, corrects? Perfect. So I'll kind of just go over the highlights of the stuff since everyone has all the numbers in front of them. So I'll kind of start with the building permit valuations. Once again, we did see kind of Papillion kind of coming out as the, with the largest building permit valuations for the third quarter with 153 million, and that kind of comes from the continued Facebook project as they continue to add on those very large and very expensive buildings. So we're kind of expecting to see that for at least kind of another year moving forward as construction continues. And also the one-landed project we had for third quarter was Omaha Box, which I'll speak about in a minute. Some other things that kind of stand out this quarter was multi-family housing permits issued this quarter. We were, third quarter we had 34 across Sarpy County, this quarter we had 319. That's really important when we start talking about workforce housing and trying to get more workforce in to have some more of those housing opportunities, especially for those folks that are, you know, moving to communities and maybe aren't ready to buy that house yet or aren't ready to, or haven't found that right house yet. So that's something we're excited about, and overall, over the past year, I think we're about double what we were last year, this in 2018, as we were compared to in 2017, and that information's on the next page. But kind of on the topic of workforce, you can see 2.5% unemployment. That's kind of dangerously low, almost an impediment to growth right now. One of the industry, interesting trends we are seeing with that is we're getting a lot of projects that kind of ask for information, and they're just asking for us to send them their workforce information before they even send us what type of buildings they want, you know, what they're looking for for utilities, things like that. And as we send them that, you know, even across the metro, I think Omaha's just hovering above 3%. They're, you know, that's not really a positive thing to be passing on, just because they want to move here but they can't find the workers. Kind of on the flip side of that, one of the positive things is we are seeing a lot of folks across the county putting in raises to their employees, so. And I think we've been around talking about 40 businesses so far this year, and I would probably say 35 of them, if not, you know, last year, this year, they've kind of raised, especially those lower skill wages, up a dollar or two. So that's something that's definitely been exciting to see. But also, at the same time, we also hear we can't keep raising wages to try and find workers because we're running into that issue where we are kind of, we're kind of running out of capital that we need for our own business. Other quick interesting thing, we're kind of see, looking at single housing permits, we are right on track where we were last year. Last year, 724, or excuse me, last year, 722 at this point, and right now we're at 724, so. And then also at total building permit valuations across the county, last year we were 801 million, and this year we're right at 800 million, so strikingly close to being on par with what we were with last year. I'll move that kind of onto this sheet, just as far as the stuff that we've been working on. Like I said, we had one landed project, that was Omaha Box, that's going out by Oxbow Animal Health, so kind of on the Highway 50 area. So that's a $40 million capital investment. So that's 70 retained jobs, if you're familiar with Omaha Box, they were actually kind of in the north Omaha Carter Lake area. They kept throughout the years adding and adding on to their facility, but I think they kind of reached that point where they needed a new facility. You know, we tried to keep them in Omaha first, but unfortunately we couldn't find the site, so then fortunately they found a landing spot out in Sarpy County. So they're bringing 70 jobs with them, and then as they expand, 20 new jobs, so we're excited to see them in the area. Project pipeline, we had six prospects for quarter three, so we had a kind of a manufacturing 19 and a call center, those were two that just asked for that workforce information, so we're waiting to see if we kind of have enough potential workforce for them. And then the other one, we had two food processing, not necessarily front-end like food, butchering things like that, but more the back end when you get kind of packaging and flavoring type projects. And then two manufacturing projects. Like I said, business retention, we've been out talking about 40 business so far, total year, I think, between myself and then the other folks, kind of in the partnership, we've reached out to Bellevue businesses, I want to say 13 or 14 so far this year. And workforce continues to be the big issue, two folks I talked to today, two different industries, same problem, workforce. And so I think going into next year, we're gonna start looking at how can we, you know, assist with transit options, how can we assist with, you know, trying to figure out if there's housing options that work to kind of make, you know, trying to alleviate some of that pressure and help out the communities, because we're seeing that region-wide, nationwide, so something we definitely want to be on the forefront of. Just quickly, I know we, the 86-acre Bellevue city-owned property, so I know we kept running into kind of issues with getting that sent out to be shovel-ready certified. Formal application is into our folks, so I think it's kind of just a formality until that gets approved. So that's kind of basically, we have all the information there, so then we have a developer that wants to come in, wants to develop there. We can just hand it off and say, you know, this is everything that's gonna have to be done in the next 12 years, or 12 months, excuse me, soon you can be up and running within a year, so it really puts that property kind of at the forefront and hopefully really helps us market that. To that point, next quarter, we will hopefully share a little more information about two prospects that we've recently had, looking in the LV840 area. So unfortunately, or not unfortunately, but we've signed NDAs with both of those projects, so I can't tell you a whole lot about them, but one we'd kind of qualify as a small to medium light industrial, and the other one is kind of a medium to large light industrial project. So hopefully next quarter we'll be able to tell you more, and hopefully next year we'll be able to come up and tell you that we landed them, so. But we're both very optimistic about those projects, and as soon as we can share more, we will do so. That's kind of the quick overview. I know Andrew was out to the Bay Area and San Francisco talking to those folks, had our annual headquarters trip out there, so he was out Facebook and a couple other companies. And, and then also Andrew completed a certification for the Master Practitioner of the Advanced Economic Development Leadership Program, so that's a program put on kind of by some southern universities, so the south really does a good job of winning a lot of big projects, so we kind of, Andrew kind of wanted to see if he can get some intel on what they're doing to bring that up here, so he can get some of those projects as well. So with that, I'll kind of open up if you guys have any questions for me.
Council, have any questions for Mr. Shavat? Mr. Preister?
Thank you. Thank you for the report and the information. As I was looking at the news today, I believe it was the editor of Forbes Magazine came out with some encouraging information, but he was identifying that we spend a lot of money trying to bring people from other parts of the country into places. His recommendation was that we spend more time on the local businesses and retention and keeping people, and in the end, we do better because they're already invested in the community. Any comments?
I get, so kind of to that point, something that we're looking at next year's program at work is starting to try and activate some committees. So Joe was there at a meeting, we had to kind of talk about, you know, what things can we work on next year, and what committees can we work on? And kind of the two ones that came from was workforce development and infrastructure, so really focusing more on how do we, you know, grow, how do we help workforce so they can get to places that they need to, so we can upscale them, so we can educate them. And I know kind of the Omaha Chamber kind of broader, they have their Prosper 2.0, which is looking at a lot of that, how do we make Omaha kind of a more attractive place, just so people, you know, retain those workers and retain that talent, but also so we can kind of get some folks to come in as well. So that's definitely top of mind, and I know talking to, you know, a lot of businesses, we are running into the issue that we don't have the workforce, so that attraction's getting a lot harder, so we are really focusing on the retention and trying to address some of those issues.
Makes sense. Good. Thank you very much for what you do.
Thank you.
I think we're good. Thank you.
Alright.
Mr. Shavat, look forward to seeing you again.
Yeah, thank you.
Item six C is community solar presentation, Mr. Cliff Messner.
Mayor, council members, thank you for having me here this evening. My name is Cliff Messner. I'm from Central City, Nebraska. I have with me also tonight Jeff Bergren from Genpro Energy Solutions and Michael Shanca from Solar, Heat, and Electric. I am by background an attorney and real estate developer, and I kind of got dragged into doing solar by these gentlemen. We started doing a small project in, in Central City that Michael was helping me with, and it developed into a community solar project. It was the first community solar project in the state, and at the time represented about 50% of the solar in the state. After we completed that, NPPD got active in doing some solar and decided that they wanted to do a, that they wanted to do a couple of pilot programs in Benango and Scotts Bluff, and Michael helped me put that project together, and we submitted that, and Genpro Energy Solutions built that for us. We actually bought and owned those two systems, and then we started doing other development. There is currently under NPPD another five-megawatt system going in, in Scotts Bluff right away. We've done projects in Aurora, Central City, Lexington, Gothenburg, Skyler, Fremont, Grand Island, Holdridge, and McCook. In addition to, there's about 16 and a half megawatts there, and in addition to that, another developer in Central City has done another eight. So to give you a sense of what happened, in, in 2014, a project that represented about 50% of the solar in the state is today less than 1% of the solar that's been built by developers out of Central City alone. So the projects are moving very quickly. Things are starting to happen, and will be even quicker next year because Norfolk is gonna come out with a proposal right away for what will be the largest in the state. Hastings has a project that's just been bid, Shadrin, Ainsworth, Atkinson, there are a lot of communities out there that are trying to do solar right now. As you know, at this point, there are people in your community that are pretty committed to, to doing something about climate change, and they are committed to using renewable energy. And this is a, an issue that is, is before you right now. Solar has really moved along, and it has a lot of advantages. It's cleaner, and it's a fixed cost, but it has now become cheaper than power off the grid. And that means that it will happen, it's going to happen in, in your communities and, and all across the nation. But there are issues with rooftop solar. First of all, you have to have a south-facing location, you have to have an installer on your roof, you have to maintain the system, you have to recover the cost when you sell the house. It often doesn't look good, and it's a problem when you start having issues with shade trees, with your neighbors, safety issues. All of those things are problems that will come back around, and sooner or later will be in front of the city council if, if we don't figure out how we're gonna address those issues. And obviously, I think cities want to avoid the inevitable planning and zoning contributes, controversy that comes from rooftop solar. But you can only do that by offering a better alternative. The only way that you're going to keep solar from rooftops is if there is a better solution that is out there. Another problem that you have with individual solar is that it goes around the public utility companies. It doesn't keep public power whole. The utility companies have a lot of fixed costs, and they recover those costs as a percentage of every kilowatt hour that they sell. So as consumers reduce the amount of kilowatt hours they're buying, the utility companies have to recover that fixed cost over fewer and fewer kilowatt hours all the time. This is not specifically a solar issue. The same thing is true if you put LED bulbs in and you put a more efficient air conditioning system in. Everything you do to reduce the amount of electricity you're buying puts more pressure on the utility companies to recover that cost that they have someplace else. The utility companies call this the death spiral. As the grid becomes more expensive, people will look for cheaper alternatives. As consumers go to other alternatives instead of buying the grid, it, they have to put that money back on fewer kilowatt hours, and the prices go up, and it drives the consumers to looking for other alternatives again. So it can become a real problem for, for public power. I want to make it clear, we still support solar on the rooftop, especially if there isn't another alternative, but we believe that community solar offers a better opportunity for everybody. And the reason that it works better is because of the economies of scale. If you go out and put solar on your rooftop, it's gonna cost about twice as much per kilowatt as it is to put together a community solar system. Some of the people have figured that out and are taking advantage of that right now. And what we discovered was that consumers will choose rooftop solar over, will, will choose community solar over rooftop solar if you give them that opportunity. What NPPD has done is they've gone out and figured out how to put together solar systems that take advantage of those economies of scale, bring the price down for everybody's benefit, and still take a cut out of the middle to keep public power whole. There are several models out there that it can be done with, the sale of shares, which is what NPPD does with its Sunwise program, the sale of panels, which has worked very successfully in Fremont. They've done both the sale of shares and the sale of panels. And another form is for a city to simply buy power for its own use. And we've seen that in Aurora, for example, you may see that in Scotts Bluff as well. The way MPP does, NPPD does their Sunwise program is that they put an RFP out for solar, they get investor group to come in and build a very large array, and then consumers can buy shares of that power that is generated. If it costs more than their regular fossil fuel, then the consumers pay more, and if it's cheaper, then the consumers get it cheaper. And we've seen both of those appear here very recently. So sometimes it may be more expensive, and sometimes it may be cheaper. I've lost my feed here. We think that this is the same process that OPPD is doing. They are building a solar array in Fort Calhoun. Not all of the details of that have been worked out. In, in the case of NPPD, they're giving people a 5.8 cent credit for fossil fuels, so if the electricity costs, if the solar power costs more than 5.8, you pay the difference; if it costs less, you get the break. We don't know what those numbers are exactly right now for OPPD, or for that matter, I don't fully understand how it is that they're calculating their, their offset. But we think the program that they're putting in place is very, very similar to what NPPD has done. Now what goes on in those communities is that NPPD requires the community to keep, guaranteed to keep NPPD whole. So what they're essentially doing is requiring that the communities will buy any excess solar that's out there. Now that's, we've had it come up three times. The first time was in the small town of Benango, it was sold overnight. The second one was in Scotts Bluff, it was sold out overnight, and the third one will be in Scotts Bluff when that one comes in, but the cost of the solar energy there will be cheaper than the, than the cost of fossil fuel. So at that point, people who sign up will actually get the cheaper electricity. So at that point, people who sign up will actually get the cheaper electricity. People have signed up for it for a couple of reasons. One is that people want to be green. People are committed to to green energy. But the other is that NPPD is signing long-term agreements that are fixing that cost of solar for twenty to twenty-five years. And the residential rate that the credit is based on adjusts every year. And a lot of the people that were signing up believe that inflation will make the fixed cost cheaper than the cost fossil fuel, which could inflate. And so they've signed up and they've sold those things out almost instantly. Fremont has done a model where you can either buy sell, buy shares or buy panels. The they've ended up in that model, about half of what's been sold has been sold in shares and about half of what's been sold are people buying panels. If you buy the panels, you get the credits, you get the depreciation. And but you have to pay Fremont something to to manage that system for you. So they take their cut out of the middle and keep their utility company whole. Fremont, which is a town about half the size of of Bellevue, sold their first meg and a half out in seven weeks. And added another meg, which is mostly sold out at this point. And they have yet to advertise it to commercial or industrial customers. I think they were a little shocked how quickly it went out. But again, that's two and a half mags they have and it's a community half your size. To give you some idea, because the mayor and Joe were asking what that guarantee would be like. If you did a 500 KW system, track system, you'd produce about a million kilowatt hours a year. If the difference between the the price on the PPA and the other was one cent, your total risk would be $10,000 a year, assuming that Don Preister and none of the people in the back decided that they wanted to do solar. If half of it got sold out, your risk is $5,000 a year. We don't know what those numbers are and you won't know until you, somebody actually does an RFP and you see what what comes out of it. But size and location makes a difference. Hitting economies of scale is very important and it reduces the risk that the city would take. Scotts Bluff did a very small system and they ended up with a higher price and they had to guarantee that price. Wasn't a problem. Like I said, it was literally sold on the first night. But when they went with the larger system, the price dropped significantly below the five point eight cents. And at that point, they were taking advantage of the cheaper electricity. You should use a tracked system. It produces about twenty percent more electricity than a fixed system does. That means that you need to do kind of a minimum size of 500 KW. That's, a lot of the communities have done that. They've started off with a 500 KW system and then they've expanded if they want to go beyond that amount. One of the problems is the track system makes it difficult to do on the old landfill because you have to pierce, you'd have to pierce the top and you can't do that on a landfill. I was asked what I thought you should do to to proceed from here. What my recommendation to you is that you pass a resolution to contact OPPD and tell them that you want to do a community solar project located in Bellevue. That you want something that individuals can buy into as an alternative to rooftop solar and that the city is willing to guarantee it, to keep it, to keep OPPD whole. I think if you do that, there is a path forward where OPPD would go ahead and put in place an RFP for you. What they've done with NPPD is they create a letter of intent between the city and the power company. You don't know where that's going to be until you actually see that RFP. And you shouldn't guarantee it until you see the RFP. But until you actually go out and bid it, you don't know whether you're taking a penny risk or whether it's cheaper than the fossil fuel. But I think that's the step forward. I think that's the next step that you have to do. When we met with the OPPD people along with the mayor and Joe and Don, they seemed willing to do that. That seemed something that they were open to doing. I think it will match up with the program that they're currently putting in place. And I think it's important that we work with public power as we move this whole thing forward. So that's my, that's my take on it. That's my presentation. I'd be happy to answer any questions that you might have.
Thank you, Mr. Messner. Any questions? Mr. Cook?
I just want some clarification on terms of making OPPD whole. Explain to me where it could be our advantage. I know it's probably all the price, price is everything. You talk about one cent. Explain to me how it makes OPPD not whole and what our obligation would be versus if they're whole and what our obligation would be. And what are the risks to OPPD if a city would tackle a project like this?
I don't think that there are any real risks to OPPD other than the time and energy that they would invest in in putting the thing in place. I think there's some advantages to OPPD to do it because it's an opportunity for them to have more green energy without taking the risk. The risk that you take is if you did a 500 KW system and it was producing a million megawatt kilowatt hours a year. And let's say that people came in and bought shares and only bought 500,000 of that. Then you would have to use or the other 500,000. You would use those 500, other 500,000 KWs against your own utility bill is what you would do. So what's really happening at that point is part of your utility bill, you're paying a penny more than you should have. So you're paying $5,000 more for your electricity than you would have if you had done fossil fuel. That's really what it boils down to is is whether it's it's cheaper or not. And it all bases based on that credit. And the credit is five point eight cents at NPPD. It's five point four four cents in Fremont. And I don't know what it will be with with Omaha Public Power District. Those numbers haven't been made public at this point that I know of.
So why would the city get involved? Why don't we just tell OPPD, go ahead and do it?
Well, that's kind of where it was before. And what you ended up with is OPPD went ahead and did it in Fort Calhoun. And the question becomes, if you're trying to deflect rooftop solar in Bellevue, does that work? And one of the things that NPPD has done well, and I and I don't mean to keep pushing that out there, but one of the things that they've done well is they put a cap on how much each community could do, but they let each community go out and do their own thing. So that there is solar in Lexington and there's solar in Gothenburg. Because each community wanted their own solar that they could point to. And each community wanted to be able to tell their residents, buy into our solar. And if Fort Calhoun works for you, then you don't need to do it because they're already often doing it there. But the experience we've had in other communities is that communities want to be able to see it, be part of it, point to it and say, this is part of how we green Bellevue. But that's, that's very much a
Well, I I understand that and that's very nice, but OPPD and NPPD are in the business of creating power. So why don't we work with them and designate maybe areas in our city where they can come down and take this venture on themselves and sell me cheaper electricity?
I think, I think if OPPD does that, that's the best of all worlds.
Okay.
The I think it's, it's been kind of a matter of of whether or not that's, that's satisfies people in the room and whether or not OPPD moves as fast as as people want them to move. But I will say, I think it's really important that we do this within public power as opposed to oppose the public power.
Sure. Thank you.
Mr. Shannon?
Can you describe for us or maybe provide a picture for us of what this animal looks like? What is a 500 KW? I mean, are we talking a football field full of solar panels or what are we talking about here?
We are five, four to five acres. We're talking four to five acres.
Of solar panels?
Of solar panels. I, I, I can send you, I can send you a picture of what it looks like. I don't think I have it on, on this particular, on this particular screen. It's not one of the huge systems. I mean, they're putting up, we put two and a half megawatts in Fremont, for example. So it'd be one-fifth that size. You've got lots of cracks of ground where you can fit it in and it won't look out of place. But one of the advantages of solar is that you don't put it on prime ground. You know, you put it on the property that doesn't have another use. You don't go out in an area that can develop as for residential real estate, for example, and put it there. You find that tract of ground, that, that brown site, that that's one of the reasons I think that people were looking at putting it on the old landfill. You do not use prime ground for solar. You put it in the, the places where it fits in. That's one of the, one of the joys of it.
And who would own the property where these are located?
It can be done anyway. In most of the communities where we've been working, the city actually owns the property. In other communities, the, they just rent the property. I actually own the property that the Central City projects are on. And in Scotts Bluff, for example, the property that was built on was the the NPPD's front yard. But there was a strange quirk in the law that said NPPD couldn't own the property and lease it to someone else to put a, a solar array on it. So they actually had to sell the property to the city and then the city went ahead and put the solar array on it.
Okay. My concern becomes revenue then because if the city owns it, you're taking it off the tax rolls and we lose revenue.
Yeah, yeah. We don't have any case where the city has, where the city has purchased property to, to, to put it on. We have cases where the city had property that wasn't doing anything for them. So they put the solar array on. And then the solar array generates taxes which come back to the city. So it's in a way, a way to take that old worthless piece of property and generates a, a nameplate capacity tax which comes back to the county and the city.
A nameplate what tax?
Nameplate capacity tax.
So it's not a sales tax. It's this nameplate capacity tax?
Nameplate capacity tax. The sales tax is another issue. And you collect sales tax on the the array unless it's a community-based economic development.
Okay. And what kind of revenue is the city looking at for this nameplate tax?
It's $3,518 a year for per megawatt. So it's not a huge amount of money. But if you compare it, it's, it's comparable to the property tax. Because what the property tax on these was, was very high, but it disappeared in five years. The nameplate capacity tax goes on and on and on. So if you have an old piece of property that's not being used and you have some around, because we've looked at some of them, and you can suddenly start generating some taxes off of it, that makes sense. You do not, again, I say, you do not take a prime piece of property and put solar on it.
So outlaws.
Yeah.
Thank you.
Mr. Preister?
Thank you, Mayor. Thank you, Cliff. I appreciate the information. It's appropriate. I didn't schedule it that way, but that you're following the Sarpy County Economic Development presentation because that's essentially where this came from. Former Assistant Administrator Larry Burks started this for economic development purposes because so many businesses were trying to attract to Bellevue only want to use a majority or exclusively renewable energy. So Larry looked at sites. He looked and talked to people at Offutt Air Force Base because the military is very interested and has contacted the mayor as well. They're looking at having renewable energy as part of federal defense. They don't want to worry about nuclear reactors being sabotaged if they're dealing with solar panels and wind generators. They're not too worried about terrorists on those things. So this is economic development for Bellevue. Utilization or potentially, I should back up just a little bit. These discussions, potential sites like the landfill site, which can't be used for anything ever, could become, as you say, a revenue generator. So we're making money off of something that can't be used for anything else anyway. And we're providing an option for people rather than putting the solar panels on their own roofs. And one of the big selling factors is where electricity prices are going to increase. They've always increased and fortunately OPPD has kept them pretty level. But eventually they go up. With these power purchase agreements, they're guaranteed flat for 20 years. So what else can you get today that isn't going to go up in price for 20 years? What else can you offer as incentive when we only have limited money to offer for economic development? And if we worked with OPPD and we got them to install one here like they did in Fort Calhoun, we're shovel ready. We're economic development ready for some of the businesses that might want to come to Bellevue. So for five years, these discussions with OPPD, with Cliff and other developers who are working on it have been going on to explore the possibilities. But it seemed time to get more public information on that now because so many communities, as you just heard, all over Nebraska, these little communities are doing it because the advantages are tremendous for them. So for Bellevue to be the third largest city and not be doing anything doesn't make economic sense or economic development sense. So that's a little background of where we are. No actions have been taken. No commitments have been made, but the discussions have proceeded. Larry identified, Larry Burks, three different sites, one near Offutt Air Force Base that was a former landfill site and the base is very interested in that. The old landfill is right next to an OPPD substation and so connectivity is very easy. It's on land that's got a south facing slope. So you get good sun, good visibility. And you don't have to pierce the cap. There are other examples of where landfills have put these on. So where we're not gaining any tax revenue or taking anything off the tax rolls, we have land just sitting there unused. So there are many advantages, some of which Larry was identifying. It's an advantage to Offutt Air Force Base. It's an advantage to economic development for the entire county. So this is a public discussion. It's setting it out there, getting the discussion moved further in the public light. And we as a council and the new mayor and council can do what we wish with it. We have an option that Cliff has presented and that OPPD is willing to work with us on.
Did you want an answer to your question?
And that question that I started to answer was
What doesn't go up for 20 years? That'd be the council's salary.
We'll get to that one, too.
Are there any other questions for Mr. Messner?
One of you asked what these look like. This is a track system here. And the way the track systems are set up, they point to the east in the morning and then they roll to the, to the west in the, in the evening. And that's why you gain so much more. If you put a system on your old landfill, you'd do a ballasted system and you wouldn't do a system probably that was tracked. But again, you're taking an old piece of property that's otherwise worthless and you're starting to to generate some stuff off of it. One of the things, last thing I would say is, because I think people are One of the things, last thing I would say is, because I think people are, are looking at the numbers here, which is good. But these numbers have changed dramatically in the last, uh, four years, dramatically. And that's part of the reason you're seeing all of this accelerated. There are people out there that have been trying to do this, and we've suddenly gotten to the point that it not only makes environmental sense, uh, it makes great economic sense. And communities are going to it because they're finding businesses that are coming saying, you know, "We want green energy." Uh, that's how we started in Benango. A business came and said, to a town of 143 people, "We want to put $10 million here, but we want to see some green energy."
Mr. Cook.
Just out of curiosity, where would be the closest one of these setup? I know you said Fremont. You named several towns.
Fremont's the one you should go look at.
Okay.
Uh, there, the Fremont one is right next to their coal-fired plant, right next to their, uh, their middle school. Right, right next to the middle school. That's the one to go look at.
Okay.
And, uh, it's easy, it's, it's, uh, and it's exactly what, one-third of that is exactly what we're recommending you start with.
One-third of their size?
One-third of the, of their, of one of their two. They actually have two and a half, so one-fifth of their whole system.
Wow.
But if you look at the one at the school, we would recommend you start with one that's one-third that size and, and see what the pricing is like.
Thank you.
Any other questions? Great presentation. Good to see you again. Thank you.
Item 60 is a presentation and a request for approval of the annual renewal of the city employee medical, dental, vision, life, and disability insurance for 2019. Mike Williams.
Good evening, Mayor, council members. My name is Mike Williams. Um, I handle the employee benefit coverage for the employees of the city of Bellevue. Uh, it is that time of the year to look forward to our 2019 plan year. And through negotiations, uh, we were very fortunate, again this year, to get a zero increase in our premiums. So this has been our second year in a row that we've had zero increases, which for a group this size is, is very good. That's no plan design changes, uh, no more, um, no plan design changes, no increases in premium, and it's still with Blue Cross Blue Shield, which our employees do like Blue Cross Blue Shield. So, um, fortunately, we got that. Ancillary coverages, which is the dental, the life, the disability. Um, we did have a bit of an increase from our, for our dental, but what we did is we negotiated all the coverages to put them together with MetLife. And by doing that, we saved $8,000 from what we paid last year. So in essence, that's an $8,000 annual decrease for our ancillary coverages. So pretty good year for us coming up, 19. Uh, no increases, no plan design changes. We do have several ongoing large claims, but for a group our size, that's fairly normal. Um, I think we've, uh, the employees have been very, very happy with the coverage. Uh, we'll get occasional calls, but, uh, usually we get things worked out. So with that being said, I'll open it up to any questions.
Mr. Preister.
Thank you, Mayor. I appreciate, two years in a row, I'm amazed that we could hold the line and the premiums didn't go up. And I'm thinking because employees are taking the wellness program more seriously.
Very much so, yes.
We've invested some money in it.
Yes.
We've provided some incentives. People are taking their health more seriously. And I, I'm guessing that that has an impact on the claims, which then helps our premium.
Very much so. In fact, I, I explained when we first started our wellness, it's not like flipping a light switch and all of a sudden everything changes. It takes time, but we're starting to see some of the rewards by your help, by providing, uh, some monies to help with our program. So yes, slowly but surely, it's working.
Good. Thank you.
Thank you.
Mr. Shannon.
Mike, I assume that, uh, from the agenda, you came here to get something approved?
Yes, sir.
Okay.
I need to get an approval from the council reference, the renewal with Blue Cross Blue Shield for our 19, 2019 health plan year, and then also combining all of our ancillary coverages to Metropolitan Life for the 2019 plan year.
Okay. And so I would assume that you presented something to the city that you need to have signed to do that?
Yes, I believe so.
Okay. Sabrina, would you bring up what documentation the council received on this item?
I did not receive any kind of information like that.
So there's been nothing presented to the public, there's been nothing presented to the council, and we're being asked to approve something. We have not been presented, had the opportunity to read, had the opportunity to go through anything.
I can only do what I'm given.
I, I understand that. Okay, but...
We had a meeting with, with city administration. Both finance and city administration went over the plan, the renewal numbers and everything else.
The summary sounds great, sir, but nothing has been presented to the public or the city council to be approved tonight. There was nothing in our agenda. We haven't seen anything. So...
I apologize.
Yeah, I mean, we, we can't in good conscience vote to approve something we haven't even seen.
I understand.
So I apologize, but I, I would think the best we could do tonight is lay this over till next council meeting, when the city administration can properly provide the documents to the council. I mean, is there a time crunch that would cause a problem?
No, because, uh, we usually have open enrollment, and fortunately, we're, along with your approval, we won't be changing any coverages or things of that sort. I apologize. I, that's usually...
If you presented it to the city, it's their responsibility to present it to the council. So...
Okay.
My, my motion would be that we lay this over till next council meeting and give the council a chance to actually see this agreement that is supposed to be approved.
Mr. Severson, would you like to say a few words?
I think in the past, what you've seen is just our plan design, and I think that's what we would probably supply to you is show the, uh, the design of the plan and the coverage. Would that be sufficient?
I'm looking to see the document that you want the mayor to sign, because that's what we have to approve.
Okay. We'll, we'll come up with something. And by the way, the, the dollar amount on this, uh, zero percent. I, uh, did budget somewhat conservatively before we knew it was going to be zero percent. Not that I didn't have complete faith in, in, uh, the negotiation, but, uh, we're, we're going to save over $200,000 from what I budgeted, which, uh, will go a long ways towards, uh, some of the other projects that we're gonna be stretched on.
I'm sure we could find a use for at least $42,000 of it.
We'll, we'll get you a plan design. Thank you.
Mr. Cook.
I, I, I think we ought to just vote tonight. We got information tonight. It's a zero percent increase. It's basically the same pa, uh, plan that we, that our employees have been on. Um, we just heard a $200,000 savings. I don't, I don't know what else we're going to get, except maybe a document that's 100 pages long. So, uh, if he wants to make a motion and he gets a second, I'm not going to support it. I want to move on, approve this and move on.
Mr. Sullivan, did you?
Oh, I just, we always, uh, put the cart before the horse. Uh, we need a second, and then discussion can ensue on whether it makes sense to vote on it or not.
I'll second.
So we have a motion and a second by Mr. Modery. Discussion.
I made the motion to, sorry. I made the motion to lay this over to the next council meeting so that we can actually see the document that we're supposed to be approving.
Mr. Preister.
Thank you, Mayor. I, I concur with Councilman Cook. For those of us that have been on the council for some time, we have seen these contracts. They don't give you a lot of information. The information that we get is that it's a zero increase over what we've already got. We know we're going to have insurance for our employees. Our contracts require it. I appreciate that we want to look at and see and scrutinize things. No question, that's a good thing. And I appreciate that Councilman Shannon wants to do that. In this case, those of us that have been on the council have seen it. Uh, we're surprised and very pleased for a $200,000 savings. That's enough for me to get to vote before anybody changes their mind. So I, I'm going to vote against the motion for just that reason. I'm ready to vote on it tonight.
Any further discussion? See none, please vote.
The vote is two to four with Mr. Shannon and Mr. Modery voting yes. Votes.
Thank you. Mr. Preister.
Mayor, thank you. I move to approve the annual renewal of the city employee medical, dental, vision, life, and disability insurance for 2019, as just presented by Mr. Williams.
Second.
Second by Mr. Cook. Discussion or questions? See none, please vote.
The vote is five to one with Mr. Shannon voting no.
Thank you. Item number seven, liquor license.
Item 7A is manager application.
Thank you, Mr. Williams.
Larry J. Reed as manager of the Class C liquor license held by Industrial Social Hall, Inc., doing business as Knights of Columbus Hall at 205 Industrial Drive.
Is there anyone here to represent Knights of Columbus? If you would come forward, please. Would you like to say a few words?
My name is Larry Reed. I've, uh, been a resident of Bellevue for 47 years, also a member of the Knights of Columbus for 46 years. And, uh, this was my application for...
Thank you. And this is because it, there's a new manager.
Yes.
Of the Knights of Columbus. Thank you. Um, I'll go ahead and open for public hearing on this. If you want to go ahead and sit back down. Um, anyone wishing to speak on this item, please do so at this time. I'll see none. I'll close the public hearing. Mr. Cook.
Thank you, Mayor. I'll make a motion that we recommend approval to the Nebraska Liquor Com- Control, Liquor Control Commission, the application of Larry J. Reed as manager of the Class C liquor license held by Industrial Social Hall, Inc., doing business as Knights of Columbus Hall at 205 Industrial Road.
Second.
Second by Mr. Preister. Discussion or questions? Mr. Modery.
Thank you, Mayor. Uh, I will be abstaining from voting on this item for religious and personal reasons.
Any other questions or statements, concerns? See none, please vote.
Five yes votes, one abstention. Motion carries.
Thank you. Item eight, ordinance for adoption, third reading.
Item 8A is ordinance number 3916, rezoning tax lot one, except right-of-way. In section seven, township 13 North, range 13 East of the 6PM Sarpy County, Nebraska, from AG to BN for the purpose of a business office. The applicant is Matt Riquini. Location is 4803 Cape Hart Road. The description, uh, the title of the ordinance is an ordinance to amend the official zoning map of the city of Bellevue, Nebraska, as provided for by Article 3 of Ordinance Number 3619. By changing the zone classification of land located at or about 4803 Cape Hart Road, more particularly described in section one of the ordinance, and to provide an effective date.
Mr. Sullivan.
A week ago, we met, uh, with the planning department as well as billing and went through, uh, what we could do to get this, uh, taken care of for, uh, Mr. Riquini. And we laid down what all those issues were, including ADA improvements that would have to be made to the property. Uh, that we then about two to three days later had a meeting, uh, with the applicant, uh, discussed what needed to be done, um, and see whether he still wanted to proceed. Uh, I just spoke with him this evening. He does want to continue to proceed. Uh, so that has now initiated me to doing the development agreement. I didn't want to spend resources on that unless, uh, he was willing to proceed forward. So we'll try to get that done in the next week, uh, and hopefully, uh, we can proceed on it in two weeks. Um, in the process of doing this, uh, a neighborhood business zoning is what it has. Was it something that in the categories permitted uses that really fit properly in there, uh, for insurance sales? Um, but there were other languages and other zoning code, uh, areas that were more general of professional services that, that didn't create a lot of traffic. And so that has been put on the planning commission's, uh, agenda, I believe, yet this month. And, um, we will get that business neighborhood or neighborhood business zoning, uh, consistent with the use that he wants to use, uh, through that process. That should be in front of the council in December. Um, but we plan to have a development agreement in place for you guys to vote on in two weeks. To make a long story short, I need it postponed for two weeks so that we can get those things done.
Question.
Mr. Shannon.
Do we need to wait for the change in the wording of BN? Because you're going to say BN in the development agreement, and so we'll have to change that to make your agreement work.
Typically, I would. I think what we're, I'm going to ask, and, and we can wait till then, or we can put it on contingent upon BN, uh, zoning being changed.
When's the planning meeting? This Thursday? Okay, so we'll...
But then it'll be in a, a zoning ordinance, and then so it probably won't be till January that gets passed?
We can have this, we can have first reading on that ordinance on the 26th of the meeting, second meeting this month, and, um, the council could waive rules at that meeting. And I think it's a pretty much, uh, a simple case of housekeeping of the text amendment. We could do it all that night.
It's just a, it's just a time, if you guys want to waive three readings, it's a timing issue. There might be a few days off from one or the other, but it, we'll figure it out.
All right. Then I'll make the motion that we, uh, lay this over till next council meeting to address it.
Second.
That'll be November 26th. We have a motion and a second discussion. See none, please vote.
All vote yes.
Thank you. Item 8B, ordinance number 3917.
Ordinance number 3917 is rezoning of lot 74 Kennedy Town Center from BN to BG for the purpose of a convenience store with fuel and liquor sales. Applicant is Casey's Retail Company, location 7724 South 22nd Street. The title of the ordinance is an ordinance to amend the official zoning map of the city of Bellevue, Nebraska, as provided for by Article 3 of Ordinance Number 39, excuse me, 3619. By changing the zone classification of land located at or about Chandler Road and 22nd Street, more particularly described in section one of the ordinance, and to provide the effective date.
I'll take it.
Mr. Shannon.
I would move to approve ordinance 3917.
Second.
Motion is second by Mr. Burns. Discussion or questions? Mr. Modery.
I know, uh, last council meeting, we, we talked a little bit about concerns with, uh, runoff, rain runoff, uh, and that. I don't know if anything further has been, uh, discussed or, or considered with that or not.
Mr. Shuchek.
I, I know that, uh, Mr. Robertson, Bob works, had, uh, discussions over time with the gentleman that lives north there, um, regarding drainage. They've obviously looked at the draining, grading and drainage plan for this lot in particular, uh, and they did not raise any issues with, for our planning department report for this development.
Mr. Preister.
I think the central issue, and I will follow up too with Mr. Roberts, was to move up the one and six-year plan and the process down there so that we put in some of those improvements to remove the, the runoff down there. And I think the council is aware we're proving something and we...
something, and we want to make sure that we don't impact somebody else as we do it. So, we can work with Mr. Roberts, and the one and six-year plan, I think, can be adjusted so we don't wait three years, but get that up in the upcoming year.
Right. And, yeah, if we have two hundred thousand free dollars now, that may help to facilitate moving up some of those projects.
Sure. Thank you for raising the issue, too.
Any other questions or discussion? See none, please vote.
All vote yes.
Thank you. Item eight B one.
Item eight B one is approval of the partial release of the restricted access contained in the plat note.
Are the wishes of the council? Mr. Modery?
I move that we approve item eight B one.
Second.
Second by Mr. Burns. Discussion or questions? See none, please vote.
All vote yes.
Thank you. Item nine, ordinance for public hearing, second reading.
Item nine A is ordinance number three nine one eight, sale of city surplus property in Whispering Timbers. The title of the ordinance is an ordinance providing for the sale of certain real estate, same being described in section one of this ordinance, directing the conveyance of such real estate and the manner and terms thereof, and designated, designating an effective date.
Thank you. I'll now open for public hearing on this item. Anyone wishing to speak on this item, please do so at this time. See none. I'll close the public hearing. The next meeting and third reading will be November twenty-sixth. Item ten, ordinance for induction, first reading, ten A, ordinance number thirty-nine nineteen.
Ordinance number three nine one nine is rezoning lots one and three, College Plaza Edition, replat one, and lot five, College Plaza Edition, from BN dash PC zero, PCO, and BNH dash PCO to BC dash PCO, for the purpose of commercial development. The applicant is Sharbs Contracting, the general location, one zero two zero Lincoln Road. The title of the ordinance is an ordinance to amend the official zoning map of the city of Bellevue, Nebraska, as provided for by Article Three of Ordinance Number three six one nine, by changing the zone classification of land located at or about one zero two zero Lincoln Road, more particularly described in section one of the ordinance, and to provide an effective date.
Thank you. The second reading and public hearing will be on November twenty-sixth.
Mayor, excuse me.
Yes.
That, that should be BG PCO for the, the proposed zoning, not BC PCO.
Change that. Sabrina, thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you. Item ten B, ordinance number thirty-nine twenty.
Ordinance number three nine two zero, increase in pay for the Marin City Council members. City Council member Shannon requests the waiver of three readings, hold a public hearing, and take the vote on tonight's meeting. The title of the ordinance is an ordinance to amend the salary and compensation of the Marin City Council of the city of Bellevue, Nebraska, to repeal ordinance number three eight four three, and to declare an effective date.
Mr. Shannon?
Thank you. Mayor, I'd make a motion that we use the tool and suspend the rule and hold both the public hearing and the vote on this so that we can have a discussion on this tonight. We need to get this seconded so we can explain why.
Second.
Second by Mr. Preister. Discussion, questions? Mr. Shannon?
All right. This was not our intent to do this all in one evening. We put this on here for first reading, and then legal got involved, and I'm gonna ask Mr. Buckley if you would address the two statutes that are at play here tonight, and why this all has to be done in one night, because I don't think from the feedback I'm getting, people had so much an objection with the pay raise. People kind of object to it being all in one night, so I just wanted that explanation out there.
The, the council can only approve a pay raise to, to take effect at the beginning of its term, and that's when there are new council members.
Entering the council.
Who are not on the last council. So, that's, that's one reason, and so if this were to go full three readings, which would be the first meeting in December, by the time this got on the agenda for a vote for approval, well, that term has already started that night, so it'd be too late. Secondly, all ordinances adopted have a fifteen-day period before they take effect. That's by statute as well. So, if this were passed at the next meeting on the twenty-sixth, that's still not within the fifteen days before the next council term starts in December. So, to have this effective for the new term of the council in December, it would have to be passed tonight.
Okay. And then one question for you. Because of the statutes you're talking about, all right, I want to make sure that it's an accurate statement that we either do this tonight, or the next window of opportunity to look at this is two years from now in December of 2020, when new council members come on again.
Right. If, if it's passed sometime after tonight, it couldn't go into effect for two years after this upcoming term starts.
So, this is why it all got capsulated into one meeting, and so, yeah, that was, there, there was no nefarious intent other than legal pushing us to meet statutes. So, anyway, we have a motion and a second on the floor to suspend the rule so we can have the discussion. I'd ask council members to vote with us on suspending the rule so that we can get the discussion at least in, and then we'll decide what we're gonna do with the overall motion.
Well, we've had a motion and a second. We are in discussion.
Can't we discuss it right now? Do we have to suspend the rules?
You're essentially discussing. You're basically discussing suspension of the rules and waiving the three readings is what the discussion would be at this point.
Not the pay raise.
Mr. Preister?
If we approve suspending the rules, it still doesn't mean that everyone has to vote to increase the salary, but it would give us the opportunity to have some discussion, which we haven't had for at least two years, and in the case of the mayor's salary, it's been twenty years since it's ever been adjusted. I think that's unfair to somebody willing to serve in the position, but I don't have much chance to make that case if this gets voted down. But this can be supported, we can have the discussion, and then we can still vote on whether we do it or not.
Any other discussion? See none, please vote.
All vote yes.
Thank you. I'm now open for public hearing on this item. Anyone would like to speak on this item, please do so at this time.
Good evening. My name's Michael Wills. I live at thirteen twenty-one Harrison here in Bellevue. Usually, I'm against things that take more money from the taxpayer, but after hounding at least three members of this council, I have come to learn that they take a lot of garbage from a lot of people. They do a lot of work behind the scenes that we never see here in the chambers, and if it were up to me, I would probably give you about two thousand a month for what you go through, and that includes you, Madam Mayor. So, I'm all for it, and thank you very much for your time.
Thank you.
Good evening. Pardon me, Carl Hanson, five oh two Coons Memorial Drive here in Bellevue. I'd like to begin by thanking the council for their selfless service to our great city, as well as this opportunity to speak. I'm compelled to oppose motion ten B in the strongest sense, not so much that you haven't earned it, undoubtedly you have. Pardon me, my notes are giving me trouble. While the motion itself is certainly self-serving in its own right, it's the motion to waive the three public hearings I have to have the strongest diversion to. This not only deprives the public of their guaranteed opportunities to support or oppose, but the city council members elect as well. This obvious attempt to circumvent the council's own policies and due process of checks and balances shows an eagerness to feather your own nest, particularly by expediting the effective date that includes your own terms of service. We've seen over the years countless motions voted down by this, this council, and rightfully so, because it only serves the person making the motion, and this certainly applies. It's my opinion, it's a blatant abuse of position for personal financial gain. In summary, it proves even further a motive of public office, and your sense of service is primarily yourself. You've tabled enough motions this evening, I urge you to give this one its due process. You owe your constituency opportunity to grant you this raise. You've earned it. To take it, just help yourself to it beforehand, I think increases the credibility gap, at the very least would create one. I would suggest in the meantime, you'd be content with a medical vision life, a disability you're granted in, agenda item six B. Thank you again.
Are there others? See none. I'll go ahead and close the public hearing. Mr. Sullivan?
No, no, there's one more.
Oh.
I did want to clarify, the council and the mayor do not, are not able to participate in those benefits.
Chuck Frederick, one five one one Madison Street. And I understand the reasoning behind Mr. Shannon's request for a salary increase. I was in the council from nineteen ninety-seven to two thousand, never missed a single meeting. I thought I did a pretty good job, but in, in regard to the work that Mr. Shannon has done, I was a pauper. He's done a lot more work than I did, and I thought I did a pretty good job. So, I, I, I kind of think that maybe this, this would be something we should do, but I have some qualms about what's happened. Last meeting, I asked to have the last twelve months of the, of the monthly balance sheet, it's one page, it'd be twelve pages. Only one to respond to me was Mr. Shannon. He said he didn't, he never got the, he never, he doesn't get a monthly balance sheet. I had talked to the next mayor, Mr. Hyke, before that, and I had said this before, I didn't say his name, but I said that, I asked him, he said he had talked to somebody in the finance department, and that person in the finance department said that the city was getting, the city council people were getting the monthly balance sheet. Now, some of you don't know the difference between a monthly balance sheet and a, and a financial, monthly financial statement. Monthly financial statement is yay thick, I've been getting them for a long, long time, and the monthly balance sheet is one, is one sheet. So, I, I'm, I'm unhappy that nobody responded to me at all, except Mr. Shannon. And when you don't respond to me, you don't respond to a whole lot of people in Bellevue. I'm not the only one up here. There, there are a lot of people like to see me up here and, and say things, and I, I get comments about, you know, keep coming up, and, but when you ignore me, you, you're ignoring a lot of Bellevue, for, for number one. The other thing is that.
Mr. Frederick, let me interrupt you, please. This public hearing is for the pay raise, okay? You'll have an opportunity to speak more later at the public right to be heard, but can you contain your remarks, please, to the pay raise issue?
Well, what I would like to have done, if there's gonna be a pay raise, I'd like to have it tied to the city having the state auditor come down right away at the beginning of the year and do an audit. Thank you.
Stephen Oz, four thirteen Coons Memorial Drive. I'm not here to speak against the pay raise. I think it's more than reasonable. I am here to speak against waiving the three readings, and that's all I really want to say, is that I have no qualms with competing with Omaha's scale, with Grand Island, with Lincoln. What we're looking at here to prospectively pay is not out of line and unreasonable for all the time that is required of our public servants. Again, I just want to emphasize, I'm against waiving the three hearings. Thank you.
Thank you. Are there others? See none. I'll go ahead and close the public hearing. Mr. Preister?
Thank you, Mayor. I'd just like to make a few comments. I appreciate everyone who testified and their perspectives. I respect that people don't like to waive the rules, and that that seems to be more objectionable than the pay raise itself. We don't like to do that, but there are times with bonding and certain issues when it is appropriate. It wouldn't be done this time, and I don't like doing it either, but because of the timeframe, there's never a good time for a pay raise for government workers. Somebody is always concerned about doing it. That's why it's been twenty years since the mayor's salary has been increased. If you look at that, that's possibly two percent a year. It's not a, out of line. I know personally that this mayor has more than earned it. It's been a full-time job essentially, and she's not going to brag about herself or even state it, but it's certainly fitting and appropriate, a fair day's wage for a fair day's work. This is service, but at least people should be fairly compensated, I believe. In the interest of comparison, we have OPPD, since we talked about them earlier, and MUD board members who meet once a month, and they get paid more than the city council does. I would say our work is every bit as involved, engaged, and we do as much. The mayor of Omaha gets paid one hundred and fifteen thousand dollars. That's full-time mayor, but I would venture to say you go to any of the events in Bellevue that that mayor is, our mayor is there, our mayor has had a whole lot more events, too. The mayor of Lincoln gets paid eighty-seven thousand dollars. The council in Omaha gets paid thirty-nine thousand. The council in Lincoln gets paid twenty-four thousand, and that's been since two thousand and five. Back that early, they already went to the twenty-four thousand. Now, I, I think comparing us to the two larger cities, since we're the third largest, is a somewhat fair comparison, but it's a little more than this deserves. The six thousand that Mr. Shannon proposed, I think, is, is certainly more in line. Another comparable is our Nebraska counties. Some of them meet every week, and some of them only meet monthly. Of the ninety-three counties in Nebraska, eighty-four of them, the vast majority, pay their county board members more than what we pay our city council for essentially the same workload. Sarpy County pays twenty-seven thousand to their county board members. Lancaster County pays forty-six thousand to their county board members, and Douglas County pays fifty-one thousand to their county board members. They, I'm not. They, I'm not saying that they do more or less work, but they're somewhat comparable jobs. And only four of those 93 counties have larger budgets than Bellevue does. Our budget is larger than all of them, and we get paid less than all but four. I think those comparables are out there. There are others, you can compare local cities, but all of them are smaller in population, way smaller in budgets. And I think, even though people don't like to do this, when I hear from people, they say, "It may be a big percentage jump, can't you do it smaller?" We try and do smaller ones, and that doesn't get approved. So, we go year after year after year. I want to commend the Bellevue leader. Two years ago, they came out in support of it. The community has largely supported it. The last time we had the hearing, virtually everybody stood in support of the actual raise. The only way we can get there, I think, at this point, is to suspend the rules. So, I'm in favor of doing that, and for the comparable reasons I just said.
Any other, Mr. Hanson.
Thank you. You know, Mr. Shannon, I saw that your comparables were Omaha and Lincoln. You know, I really don't look at the city of Bellevue and the city of Lincoln, and the city of Omaha's comparables inside. They've got full-time mayors, they're there. You know, I think, I can't tell you what they do or don't do, but to compare us with them, I think is just way out of line, if you want to compare. Maybe we should look at Papillion, they're a little over 12,000. I think La Vista is like 4,300. But comparing those two is just crazy. That thing is like a 50% raise, when you look at it that way. And I also want to say that I think it's important, perhaps, maybe as you might look at our new mayor and the new council people, they're going to come on here, and maybe they have some different ideas. The last time, two years ago, we had Mr. Preister that wanted an increase, I think Mr. Carmichael wanted to reduce it, and we basically kept the same, you know? I mean, I don't look at this as really like a job-job thing. I think we're mostly like volunteers, and we're doing it for the public. I served 28 years on the school board, and with no pay, you know? And the retirement benefits are really good there, zero times zero. So, but I'm just telling you that I just think that for, all of a sudden, for us to, you know, just say, "This is what we're going to do because we want this right now," maybe it's better to have it, if you like, you know, have the three hearings and see what the public does. I was pretty quick about this hearing being here today, so in the next meeting, if you have it that way, I think it should be able to be that way. So, I'm definitely going to be against this motion.
Any other discussion or questions? Mr. Cook.
Thank you, Mayor. I've been here for six years, and this has came before the council a couple times, and we voted down. You know, one thing that I think we're missing here, and Mr. Hanson just touched on it, we're not looking at Papillion, La Vista, we're not looking at Grand Island, which is probably a couple thousand less than us. I don't know what those numbers are. I'm going to agree with Mr. Hanson, I cannot support this. I think if we want to bring back something, maybe sometime next year, we could look at it, but I, I'm with Mr. Hanson, I just don't think, I think the dollar amount is too much, but this could have been, we talked about this, I believe, in strategic planning, I think we talked about it, had the budget, why didn't someone tackle it then? Why didn't someone say, "Let's do it," then? And, now, I know it was an election year, but why didn't we do this six months ago?
We waited till we got all the union contracts passed. That way, we've taken care of all the city employees first.
I just think that, I find it, I find it a little unusual, that Papillion, La Vista, Grand Island, places like maybe Norfolk and Fremont, what their salaries are at those towns, that we have not brought those up. I didn't look it up, but I think it would probably be more in line with us here in Bellevue. Thank you.
All right. I would just remind everybody, we do this tonight, or the next window of opportunity is two years down the road for that raise.
Any other discussion, questions? See none, please vote.
We don't have a motion yet.
Oh, because we had the public hearing, yes.
Oh.
So, we do need a motion.
We suspended, for clarification, we suspended the rules.
Yes.
And now, we have had the public hearing, and now this vote would be on the actual pay increase.
Right.
Correct.
So, yes... I will move to approve ordinance number 3920.
Now, I will second.
Motion is second, any further discussion or questions?
And for clarification of anybody that's out there, this is for a $6,000 increase for the council members and for the mayor position, not for individuals, but for the positions.
Mr. Burns.
In this situation, truthfully, I'd rather just have the three readings. That way, people do have, one, I don't think any of us have had any real time to think about it, I mean, unless, you know, besides Don, and some of you other guys, I guess you guys have been here a lot longer than I have. Just because I don't think that's fair, and I think we're primarily just waiving the statutory rules so that it takes effect.
We've already voted on suspending the rules?
Well, yeah, but that's great. But what I'm saying is, is, can we reverse that? I mean, can, we essentially could, couldn't we? Or we could just vote it down. I mean, either way, I think it'd also be fair, too, if, you know, we are going to have new council members, too, you know, they might have some say in it, and they also might have some new ideas, I don't know. I think John made a really good point. But I guess that's where I'm going with it. If it's going to happen, I just, I'd rather it just be a fair process.
Well, it was publicly advertised, and people did show up for the public hearing, so notice was given to the public that the public hearing on this would be denied.
All right, well, that's great, but how many people really got notice, and how many people really know what's going on? We're not even a live meeting. I mean, we are essentially with cameras, but...
How many show up for any issue?
Well, and that's great, but we didn't even really give people a fair opportunity to show up, besides four tonight.
Any other questions, discussion? Mr. Sullivan.
No, I'm good.
You're good? See none, please vote.
Vote is two to four with Mr. Shannon and Mr. Preister voting yes. Motion fails.
Thank you. Moving on to item number 11, public hearing on matters other than ordinance.
Item 11A is a public hearing on the request from Bellevue Economic Enhancement Foundation in partnership with the Salvation Army and Marathon Ventures for a fireworks display at 901 Fort Creek Road North on November 16, 2018, at approximately 6:45 PM in conjunction with the Salvation Army Big Red Kettle 2018 Community Kickoff Celebration.
Mr. Risto.
I think this is our fourth year for this event. Marathon Ventures is always a great sponsor of hosting it, and as well as contributes 10% of their sales that night to the Salvation Army, but this year, we're kind of ramping it up a little bit more, kind of compete with the Tree of Lights in Omaha, but the fireworks show is always a nice thing to kind of add a little bit of flavor to it, but we will have a live feed down there from 105.9 for the toys, Toys for Families, Adopt a Family, so they'll be part of our thing down there. We'll also have, of course, Santa and the rest of it, so it's a great kickoff for the Salvation Army for the year, a great increasing awareness for their needs on the Kettle Drive, as well as some of the activities that we have, but the fireworks are always kind of a special part of it, so make sure I'm inviting all of you guys out there Friday night, too. Great night for, weather-wise, it won't be 30 below, so we're looking for a fun night. Any questions?
No, just a statement, Salvation Army does so many programs and assists so many families in Bellevue, so it's a great cause, and John Larson with Marathon Ventures takes a big part of this on his own back, so it's a wonderful event. I'll go ahead and open for public hearing now at this time. Anyone else that would like to speak on this, please do so at this time. I see none, I'll close the public hearing.
Mayor.
Mr. Modry.
Thank you. I move that we approve the request for the fireworks display at the Salvation Army Big Red Kettle Community Kickoff Celebration.
Second.
Second, my Mr. Cook. Discussion or questions? See none, please vote.
All voted yes.
Thank you. 11B.
Item 11B is a public hearing on the CDBG 2017-2018 Consolidated Annual Performance and Evaluation Report, CAPER.
Welcome, Abby.
Good evening, Mayor and council members. Tonight before you is our Consolidated Annual Performance and Evaluation Report. It's our end-of-year report for CDBG for the 2017 project year. It is required by CDBG program requirements, and it's a report that we send to HUD to summarize what projects, activities, and any expenditures that took place in the last fiscal year. Some of the highlights from this year's CAPER, the city received an entitlement amount of $318,561 from the 2017 action plan, and those went to six projects. And during the year, we expended a little over $245,000. There were 16 active projects during the program year, and we were able to complete seven of those. Nine are still open and will be reviewed at the end of their agreements in January and February. And of all the funds that were spent towards activities, 100% of those benefited low and moderate-income people, household areas, as we identified in our plan. In addition to the CAPER, we also distributed a single-page summary of our 2017 activities. It is also available on the CDBG page of the city's website, so if anybody has any questions, I will be happy to answer those.
Any questions for Abby? Mr. Shannon.
Abby, thanks for coming today.
Yes.
We have a, in the 2016 projects, an open balance of $74,000 there for home repair for low-income elderly homeowners within the city limits?
Yes.
Okay. Is that open to, if we know of a constituent that's elderly and they need some help with the repair at their house? Okay, we can bring that to you?
You can have them call the city, or we work with Project House Works to administer that program, they can call them, they can always call the city, I will make sure and get the information to them.
Okay, but we can bring new projects to that money?
Any elderly homeowners in the city limits are eligible to apply, and Project House Works will work with them to complete repairs.
Okay, thank you.
Any other questions for Abby? See none, I'll open for public hearing now on this item. Anyone wishing to speak on this item, please do so at this time. See none, I'll close the public hearing.
Item 11B1 then is the resolution 2018, excuse me, 2018-34, approving the CDBG 2017-2018 CAPER.
Mr. Preister.
Thank you, Mayor. I'll move to approve 11B1, Resolution 2018-34.
Second. Motion is second. Discussion or questions? See none, please vote.
All voted yes.
Thank you. Item 12, resolutions, none. 13, current business.
Item 13A is approve and submit the request for release of funds and certification forms to HUD for CDBG 2018 projects.
Where the worship council, Mr. Shannon.
I'd move to approve 13A.
Second.
Second, my Mr. Preister. Discussion, questions? See none, please vote.
Vote is five to one with Mr. Modry voting no. Motion carries.
Item 13B is approving the purchase of two Buffalo tariff stations, which are storage devices for use by the Cyber Crimes Investigations Division of the Police Department in the amount of $19,788.
Mayor.
Mr. Shannon.
Mayor, I'd move to approve the purchase of two Buffalos to squash people that commit cyber crimes, in the amount of $19,788.
Second.
Second, my Mr. Modry. Discussion or questions? See none, please vote.
All voted yes.
Thank you.
Item 13C is approving the appointment of Sue Cutsford to the Planning Commission for a three-year term ending August 2021.
Mr. Cook.
I'll make a motion that we approve the appointment of Sue Cutsford to the Planning Commission for a three-year term ending August of 2021.
Second.
Second, my Mr. Hanson. Questions or discussion? Mr. Shannon.
Again, we have a mayor-elect. We shouldn't be making these appointments in the last 30 days of this mayor's term. This should go to the new mayor to make his appointment and put who he wants on the Planning Commission. I don't think that this is appropriate, the last 30 days, this should be held over for the new mayor to make this appointment. I don't think this is an appropriate person either, but that's neither here nor there. I don't think this appointment should go through.
Mr. Shuchak, would you like to comment, please?
You are still the mayor.
Yes.
We can't delay everything, you know? I think some of this discussion about the new mayor started many months ago. We can't delay everything just until Mr. Heike is sworn in as mayor. City still has business to do, we're short a member on the Planning Commission.
Exactly.
Thank you.
How many people do we have on the Planning Commission?
There are nine, there are eight members now. We are short one member.
Okay, there's only six on the council, and we get the job done.
That has nothing to do with it.
Any other questions or discussion? See none, please vote.
Vote is four to two with Mr. Shannon and Mr. Modry voting no. Motion carries.
Thank you. Item 14, Administration Report. Are there any questions for Mr. Mangi Malley? Mr. Preister.
Thank you, Mayor. Yes, a couple of comments. The one thing I noted on there was the Fontanel Forest Walkway Meeting, and the other was, there was some wetlands mitigation discussion. Could you comment on either or both of those, and any, what is the Fontanel Forest Walkway? That's a walkway that the forest has some property, that they have a parking lot that they want to connect. As a matter of fact, that meeting got canceled due to the snow the other day, so we're still awaiting that. I had prepared the report the day before. As far as wetlands mitigation, that has to do with our property down on Cunningham Road, and how we would mitigate some of the property that is other than the old baseball complex and property to the south owned by the Utah Company, and try to tie that in with the sewer building, the evacuator building that would be constructed to service that property. Thank you.
Any other questions? See none, we'll move on to item number 15, Public Request to Be Heard. Any members of the public addressing the council shall abide by Council Policy Resolution Number 35 regarding the principles of conduct and decorum, which states, "Any statements made during the city council meetings by the mayor, members of the city council, city officials and employees, or members of the general public shall not involve personal, impertinent, or slanderous attacks on individuals regardless of whether the individual so attacked is elected official, city official, or employee, or a member of the general public, and City Code Section 2-68 regarding the manners of addressing the council." Copies of the aforementioned rules are posted in the council chambers. Speakers shall only meet the presentation to five minutes. order to come down so we can straighten this thing out. The last time I got a, a balance sheet from the city was a few years back. I didn't try to dig it up. I'm not going to take the time, but it was a balance sheet, one page, but it didn't even bounce. So I, I maybe, you know, maybe, that is true. It is true. If they want me to take it, look, look it up, I suppose I could, but it is true. Don't tell me it's not, because I, I could find it if I have to find it. So why not have a balance sheet every, every month? And then, a couple of other things. One other thing is that you voted down for the, for the raise, but maybe there's another way of giving the councilmen some perks, maybe, or some extra, extra expense accounts? I mean, that, that was done before. I'm not sure if that's a solution, but that's, at least a thought, anyway. Other thing is that I've been talking before about, about the, about having the, the GDBG person, not in California, but we're right here in Bellevue as a city employee. Most cities, that's a part-time job for them, and, and they do other duties besides. So I, I don't see why we have to have the expense of somebody flying here from California all the time to do this. I think it could be done locally. Thank you.
Are there others? See none. I'll close the public, excuse me.
Good evening. My name is Jody Van Houten. I live and work in Bellevue. I am here tonight because I would like to speak about bullying. In the local and national news, we have been seeing more and more cases of bullying. We are trying very hard to show our children, our grandchildren, that bullying is not acceptable. To target an individual or individuals and to try to intimidate them is not only bullying, but it does make for a hostile work environment for all employees. I am here to say that is exactly what has been going on with the group Bellevue Deserves Better and many of the officers of the Bellevue Police Department. Shame on them. The subject of all this bullying has been Chief Mark Albert. They have gone out of their way to try to discredit him, slander him, break him down, to ruin his life, to try and intimidate him, and to try and make him quit. But even with all of that, Chief Mark Albert has more class, more integrity, and more professionalism than any of these people. They tried, they are still trying to bully him. But Mark is not only exonerated of allegations made to the city, but also the Nebraska Crime Commission, who said there was nothing that warranted taking his law enforcement certification away. Both have said he is well within his management rights to the actions that he took. The EEOC also cleared Chief Albert of any wrongdoing. To those officers who voted a vote of no confidence, what exactly has Chief Albert done to you? Before voting, you should have considered how Chief Albert has helped you. How many of you has Mark helped after your surgery with your yards, gutter cleaning, et cetera? How many times has he supported the different specialty units in this department? Having to convince the council to keep equipment, or to allow you training above what is mandated, the ammunition to practice, to give you the ability to drive new safe vehicles, work out on duty, support military members, shall I go on? There's so much more I could list. I am very disappointed with the seventy-two officers and sergeants of this police department who voted yes for a vote of no confidence in Chief Albert without hearing his side. What person, what caller, would want an officer to come to a neighborhood dispute and only listen to one side? What person would want an officer to arrive in their time of need and have that officer listen only to the other side of the story? Shouldn't an officer try to find out the whole story before making a decision? Wouldn't you want an officer to treat all people equally until the officer finds out what really happened? Would you want the officer to rush to make a decision without all the facts? That is what these officers did. They blindly and uniformly made a rash decision, and then took it to the media, a step that should have never happened and didn't need to happen. There are avenues within the city to voice complaints against superiors and have those complaints heard and investigated. What officers want, what officer wants an allegation made against him or her released to the media? None. They demand allegations remain confidential and be handled discreetly. They don't even want their peers to know. It is time for the officers of this department to stop bullying and afford the chief of police the same courtesy and respect they demand for themselves. In fact, after an allegation of misconduct against an officer is exonerated, it is over. It is done. The department moves on. The officer goes back to work. The department does not continue to listen to the complaint and talk about the same thing over and over. It is time for the police union to move on, focus their energies on serving the public and repairing their work relationships. I've worked at the police department for twenty-three years this month. I stand behind Chief Albert, Captain Stukenholz, Captain Dargy, and Captain Melvin. I respect them, and I have learned a great deal from them. They all have great integrity, honesty, and loyalty to the department, to the city of Bellevue, and its citizens, and they will always protect and serve. Now the officers of this department need to follow their command officers. It's done. It's over. Now let's move on. Thank you, Mayor. Thank you, Mr. Mangi Mally, and thank you, Council, for your time.
Hi. My name is Molly Decker. I'm with Bellevue Deserves Better. And I did not intend on speaking tonight, but after that, I feel like I, I need to. You know, I just Googled quickly the definition of bullying, because I like to be factual when I speak. And bullying is using superior strength or influence to intimidate someone, to force him or her to do what one wants. What we want is truth, and honesty, and integrity in policing and in running a city. I don't think that's too much to ask. We've been here. We will continue to be here until that happens. We have seen recently some changing of the tides. We, we are seeing hope with a new city administration coming in, and we are hopeful that the city of Bellevue will take decisions like the one regarding the chief a little bit more seriously. We heard you guys debate earlier and, and heard various sides of opinions about a raise for city council members. And, you know, initially, I wanted to speak then, but I really don't want to take anything away from our mission, and our mission is to educate people about, educate people on facts. We've been very factual in this, but it was hard to sit by and watch that discussion take place and not step up and say something. If you do what you've always done, you'll get what you've always gotten. We're asking people to think differently. We're asking the city council and city administration to think differently, to put a little bit more effort into, you know, reviewing information and asking questions. And it's hard to expect them to do that when they can't even get a simple raise that's commensurate with other cities of our size. That's just baffles me. And as the public who sits back here and listens to things, I mean, you, you probably, I'm sure you hear people snicker. It's not only me, I promise. But people are snickering because the decisions that are made sometimes, like the most basic, easy, simple things. I mean, we heard you argue about a Krispy Kreme and, like, how to get in and how to get out. And, you know, the public is like, we just want a Krispy, or a Dunkin' Donuts, you know, we just want more business. We, it seems like the simple things we debate about and, and get lost in the shuffle. You know, earlier, your insurance consultant presented on a zero percent increase for the city. Awesome. But because the information didn't get to the rest of the city council to review, you couldn't vote on it. It's like, come on, you're getting in your own way. And in regard to the chief, and, you know, I appreciate people who are passionate about people that they care about and people that they feel like they know. And I would just say that this is not a, definitely not an attempt to bully anyone. This is fact. If any one of the police officers that is on the street today in Bellevue lied, especially under oath, they would lose their job, zero questions asked. This would not have taken a year. That person would not be in this room. They would not have a job. And we're asking for the same accountability. And we've asked it of you guys as city council members. We've asked you to review the information. But I understand, too, that sometimes that information is blocked. Sometimes you don't get all the information. We understand that. And, you know, we're hopeful that with a new city administration, taking, city administrator taking over soon, and hopefully that will improve the communication, and hopefully that will allow you guys to get some more information. But we've also heard that if a new city administrator takes over, that won't happen. We've heard that. So, you know, I mean, I would say, understand that our, our goal, Bellevue Deserves Better, our goal is to improve Bellevue, Bellevue on many, many facets. For us specifically, for me specifically, as it affects my husband, he is a police officer here, and he, it's black and white. He, he polices that way. It's black and white. Did you commit a law violation? Do we hold you accountable? We're asking that you hold the chief to the same regard, and in terms of the other individuals that you mentioned, I would say that they played a part. When people are complicit in knowing something is untruthful, especially when you're in a law enforcement role, you should not have that job. And, and that's what I would say about that. That's the bottom line. I appreciate your time, and thank you.
Mayor Sanders, Mr. Mangi Mally, Mr. Sullivan, council members, and department heads. My name is Pat Kokenderfer. I've lived in Bellevue for twenty-six years. I am the part-time administrative secretary for the chief of police, captains, and whoever else needs my help. I have worked with and for Chief Albert and the Bellevue Police Department for sixteen years. I love my job and who I work for. I am standing here today because I don't like what's happening to this department, this city, and the people that run them. I have been in the workforce for over fifty years, and Mark Albert is one of the best bosses I have ever worked for. He's a good man. I'm sure some of you already know that, but have been swayed to think differently. Chief Albert has helped so many of you, but you choose to disregard his friendship like it never existed. And then there are some of you who don't know him at all, because you haven't been on the department long enough. He has helped so many of you. He has not hurt any of you. When things first started feeling strange at the office, I asked the chief what was going on. He said he couldn't tell me and probably never would be able to. So when I first started reading the newspaper accounts of what was happening, I couldn't believe it, because I knew someone was vomiting lies. The bad part of this scenario was that Chief Albert was not allowed to tell his side of the story, or refute any of the lies that were being told about him. However, throughout this whole year, you or your attorney went to the news media and spewed your venom. As police officers, you should know there are always two sides to every story. And if you don't know that, maybe you ought to rethink your occupation. So I just have a few questions for those who have been so verbal at these council meetings and in the media. Number one, I know who you are, but who do you think you are? What woman or wife comes to the council chambers and speaks for their husbands? Number two, were you there when all this happened, or did your husbands just tell you their side of the story? The same goes for those that voted no confidence. Were you there, or were you told one side of the story? Number three, what happens when the whole story is told and you realize that you didn't know the whole truth? Does anybody get an apology, especially in the news media? The first part of two thousand seventeen, Chief Albert's name was submitted for the position of U.S. Marshal of Nebraska, and he was seriously being considered for that position. We knew he would be leaving within a month, but him leaving wasn't good enough. You, in your infinite wisdom, decided to drag his name and his family through the mud and ruin his career. I think it was your premeditated intent to do just that. Do you people know or care what you're doing to the city of Bellevue or its citizens? Probably not, since some of you don't even live here. How are you going to feel when the chief is able to tell his side of the story, and it differs from yours? I'd like to say something about your T-shirts. Do you realize that Bellevue Deserves Better reflects back on you? It's really funny that the whole year Chief Albert was gone, and you also tried to get rid of a couple other administrators. The T-shirts didn't come out. It wasn't until Chief Albert was totally exonerated and reinstated as the chief of police. But you didn't like that answer, so you decided to create a nonprofit organization. Really? How does selling T-shirts fit in with a nonprofit organization? Of course, you needed money to pay for those ridiculous billboards, right? Hate is a strong emotion. I don't hate any of you. I hate what you've done to this department and your fellow officers. I'm tired of seeing long faces and people not speaking to one another. Where is the great department I joined sixteen years ago? You all have so much hate in your hearts. Where is there room for God? Last year, I discovered I had thyroid cancer and had to have it removed. I suffered vertigo for a couple weeks after that and couldn't drive. That mean old boss of mine, Chief Albert, offered to take me a couple of my doctor appointments. It was on one of these trips I said to him, now comes the hard part, Mark. You have to forgive him. Being the Christian man that he is, I bet not one of you could ever imagine what he said. He looked at me and said, I already have. He is a good man. At one of the first council meetings, one of the women mentioned that Omaha Police was accepting lateral transfers. Before coming to Bellevue, I worked for Omaha Police for twenty-two years. Retired Officer Councilman Cook can verify this for me. But Jim Skinner, who was chief in Omaha at the time, had a saying, and I will paraphrase, because I refuse to quote him exactly. He said, if you don't like it here, don't let the door hitch on the butt on the way out. Thank you for your time.
See no others? Item sixteen, closed session, none. Item seventeen is adjournment. Before we adjourn, I'd like to wish everyone a happy Thanksgiving.
I would move to adjourn?
Second.
Motion and second. Discussion or questions? See none, please vote.
All voted yes.